Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the reorganization meeting and regular school board meeting of the Martin County School Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we're going to have a moment of silence. Thank you. We will now say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The republic for which it stands, the nation, to God, the invisible, thirteen.
It is now my pleasure to introduce the Felix A. Williams Elementary School Sailfish Singer Chorus, led by Colleen Dockerty. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. Never seen this room so full.
The first song that they're going to perform is our Felix A. Williams Elementary School song, and it was written by two students that used to go to the school, Jacqueline and Sarah Anson. And then we're going to perform a sneak peek, two songs from our holiday musical that's coming up. We're doing December in Our Town, and it features five different holidays that happen in the month of December, and we'll be performing that on December 16th. The first song will be Light the Candles, that's about Hanukkah, and the second song will be La Fiesta, the Las Posadas Hispanic tradition.
Could we get a picture with the chorus? Would you mind?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You did a wonderful job. Thank you. Thank you so much. You did a great job.
That will leave three people. I feel like he's testing our limits to see if we throw him out or something. Yeah.
Ms. Falls, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Moriarty.
Here.
Mrs. Roberts.
Here.
Mrs. Powers.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Pritchett.
Here. Okay, I would like a motion to approve the agenda with the following addendums. Items added: 9.04 to Personnel Recommendations, 20.09, revision of graduation testing dates. Items updated: 6.02, 11.01, 11.02, 11.03, 11.04, 20.01, 20.03, 20.08, 20.09. Items removed: 20.06, school choice, and controlled open enrollment.
Move approval of the agenda with the changes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved unanimously. We will now have the reorganization by the superintendent as acting chair until the reorganization is complete.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'd like to bring our attention to item 3.01, election of our new chair. At this time, I am making a call for nominations for chair.
Motion for Marsha Powers.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Russell for Mrs. Powers, a second by Dr. Moriarty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Congratulations, Mrs. Powers.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Item 3.02, election of our vice chair. At this time, I'd like to call for nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Lee Roberts as vice chair.
I would like to withdraw, please. Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Brian Moriarty.
Nomination for Dr. Moriarty as vice chair, with a second by Mrs. Russell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Dr. Moriarty.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to move us to item 3.03, for us to set the regular meeting dates and times. I call for a motion and second to set the regular meeting dates and times for the third Tuesday of each month at 4:00 PM.
Just one point of clarification. The scheduled meetings included the one, the meetings that were changed because of spring break, so that's what we're approving as well, so all of those changes that were listed.
With the spring break.
Perfect. I move approval.
Second.
Can we have discussion, please?
Yes.
Thank you. So we had Marcia and Brian. I have a problem with changing the January to the fourth Tuesday. That's when FSBA is going to be in Tallahassee. So I don't know who needed...
That was me. The Chamber of Commerce is in Tallahassee the third week, so I'm open to the second week or another week, but that third week, I'm in Tallahassee.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll figure it out.
I mean, I'm fine with the second week. Do you, is that an issue for anybody?
I can't do the, I'll be out of town the second week, so.
That's fine. I'll figure it out. I'll just drive late. But if everybody's going to FSBA, we've got to find some sort of resolution, too.
I don't know who else is going besides me, so.
I think, I'm going. I thought I saw that on travel. I haven't put in travel yet, but maybe going.
It'll just mean driving late on Tuesday after the meeting.
But I know that FSBA doesn't start until noon on Wednesday, because I just looked at that today, because I was looking at those date changes. It doesn't start until noon on that Wednesday, and then the legislative meetings are scheduled for Thursday afternoon.
So I was scheduling some for Wednesday morning, so that's why. But it's okay. I mean, I can just drive late Tuesday night. I mean, after the meeting. How many hours? It's only like five hours, right? Four hours? How many hours? Tallahassee, it's six.
Five hours?
Yeah, that's okay.
Seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12.
You could fly.
You can make it in five and a half.
Yeah, that'll be, and at night, there'll be less traffic, so.
Five, five and a half. It depends on how you drive.
Can we do a Monday that week?
I'm okay with that.
I'm fine with that, too. Honestly, it's like Tuesday doesn't have to be the day. I mean, it is a, it is a crazy, yeah, that month is just really crazy. And I know Children's Week is also in February, so it's, there's a lot going on that we have to... Yeah, Monday would work, if that works for everybody. Monday, the 26th.
What time are you guys looking at? I'm in the office on Monday till 6:00. Is 5:00 a possibility? I could do 5:00.
Pleasure of the board.
Doesn't matter to me what time it is.
I'm hearing a request for 5:00 on Monday, January 26th.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, let me just, just to make sure.
Mrs. Powers, check real quick.
Monday, the 26th. Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay. And then I'll have to call in on December 9th. I'll be traveling that day, but I can call, that's a workshop. I'll just call in that day. I think we can accommodate that, maybe.
Yeah, we should probably do a practice run before, just so that, you know.
Okay, so if the chair can get us a practice run and be sure it works. Thank you. But if you just make a note, I'm calling in on that day.
Okay, so I have a call for a motion and a second to set the regular meeting dates and times for the third Tuesday of each month at 4:00 PM, minus the Monday, January 26th. At 5:00 PM, the motion was made by Mrs. Powers and seconded by Dr. Moriarty. All in favor?
There's other exceptions in those dates. It's not always the third Tuesday.
So as presented in the draft. Yeah. With the, as presented in the draft, with the exception of...
Draft. Okay.
Yes, and that's my motion.
All right. Motion by Mrs. Powers, second by Dr. Moriarty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 3.04, seeking board approval to direct the superintendent to file the proceedings of the reorganization with the Department of Education within two weeks to include the schedule for regular meetings and the names and addresses of all district school officers.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Roberts, a second by Mrs. Powers. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. At this time, the school board reorganization meeting is adjourned, and the time is 4:20. Thank you.
Perfect. Which? Well, we can, let's just, we'll just leave it the way, and we can switch at the next meeting. I'm okay with that.
Okay, you're sure?
Yeah, yes, of course.
You want the gavel?
Oh, yes.
And you run the deus speaker?
Yeah, let's just take a quick...
Recession?
Five-minute break, and then we'll move around.
Okay.
Meeting of the Martin County School Board Leasing Corporation. This is our annual meeting of the membership and the board of directors. At this, per our corporation's bylaws, it requires at the annual meeting, which is this meeting, of the board of directors, that we hold our annual reorganization meeting. So at this time, I will take a motion to approve the appointment of school board members as the corporation board of directors.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Dr. Moriarty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I will now entertain a motion to approve the appointment of the officers, the chair, Marsha Powers, vice chair Brian Moriarty, and the superintendent as the secretary treasurer of the corporation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, item 4.03, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Martin County School Board Leasing Corporation meeting held November 19, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Pritchett, a second by Ms. Roberts. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, if there's no further business, we will adjourn this meeting of the Martin County School Board Leasing Corporation.
Meeting adjourned. Okay, now, we will convene the regular school board meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Ms. Pritchett.
Hi there.
You guys, you guys get me. Ms. Pritchett, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now, we have board member discussion. Ms. Pritchett, you have an item?
Oh.
The resolution to celebrate America's 250-year semi-quincentennial.
Yes. I would like to read, read the resolution, if that's all right?
Perfect.
This is a resolution of the Martin County School Board to celebrate America's 200...
This is a resolution of the Martin County School Board to celebrate America's 250th year semi-quinsentennial. Whereas the United States of America will commemorate its 250th anniversary on July 4, 2026, marking a historic milestone in the nation's history. Whereas on July 4, 1776, the Second Continental Congress formally adopted the Declaration of Independence asserting the American colonies' freedom from British rule and laying the foundation for the principles of the nation's independence and self-governance. Whereas by understanding historical texts, students can gain valuable insights that will enable them to be informed and active members of their communities. Whereas sharing our American journey will instill patriotism and pride in a generation of youth who seem to be losing sight of America's values and exceptionalism through its struggles and triumphs. Whereas to understand the sacrifices and struggles of the generations before them, we should teach that freedom is not free and honor our active and fallen heroes by learning from veterans and their stories of heroism. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Martin County School Board is dedicated to celebrating the 250th anniversary of the greatest nation on earth by teaching the principles of America's exceptionalism, which are based on liberty, self-governance, and national law. These principles, outlined in the foundational documents of the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution, are essential for K-12 students to understand civil society and the principles of the rule of law. Be it resolved, the Martin County School Board encourages the superintendent, educators, staff, parents, and students in the Martin County School District to actively develop commemorations to reflect upon their America 250 journey celebration. And be it resolved that the Martin County School Board commits to allocating funding for age-appropriate patriotic education across all K through 12 grade levels. This includes developing curriculum, civic activities, events, and student-led commemorations. The superintendent will also establish a minimum time for students to actively participate in lessons and events in coordination with the 250th anniversary of the United States. Be it finally resolved that the Martin County School Board invites the community to join us in celebrating and reflecting on our nation's remarkable journey. By honoring the exceptional qualities passed down through generations, we can instill a sense of solidarity and strength in our youth through celebrating and emphasizing the principles of liberty, justice, and self-governance that make our country worthy of honor and dedication for generations to come. Adopted by the Martin County School Board on November 19, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna have to change the bottom, Diane, to switch out the chair and vice chair.
Can we move this to an action-only item since it's advertised to approve the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move this to action?
Okay, great. Thank you.
And we'll go ahead and approve it at this meeting.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have our student representative, Delaney.
Thank you. I'll be starting off today with Jensen Beach High School for the November, the November notes. So for Jensen Beach High School, several student clubs and organizations came together to create over 250 Thanksgiving baskets for Elevate Hope ahead of the holiday. Jensen Beach High School is also in the process of opening its food bank. Donations are already being made to help struggling families make sure they have food when in need. On Monday, November 10, Jensen Beach High School recognized all their military staff, military veteran staff members with a ceremony in the courtyard in a gift bag. The Jensen Beach AFJROTC has been very busy volunteering to help feed local community members and participating in the Stewart Veterans Day Parade. On November 13, the Jensen Beach PTSA recognized the Reflections Contest winner with an award ceremony and banquet in their honor. Congratulations to the swim and dive team for their amazing performance at regionals last week. These 13 athletes participated in the state championships this past Friday and Saturday. For the two-times medley relay, Juliette Scudary, Elizabeth Barnhart, Chloe Morganstern, and Sienna Udzinski. Sorry if I pronounced that wrong. For the boys 200 freestyle, we have Boone Stoneberg. The boys 550 freestyle, Justin Skurdery. Girls diving is Madison Newman and Bella Finiman. Boys diving is Colin Stumbo. Girls 100 fly, Elizabeth Barnhart. Girls 100 freestyle, Juliette Scudary. Boys 100 freestyle, Justin Scudary. Boys 500 freestyle, Boone Stoneberg. Boys 2 freestyle relay, Boone Stoneberg, Thomas Osborne, J.J. Freeman, and Justin Scudary. And for the girls 4 freestyle relay, Sienna Udzinski, Elizabeth Barnhart, Natalie Skarkella, Juliette and Juliette Scudary. For the boys 4 free relay, Boone Stoneberg, Parker Woods, J.J. Freeman, and Justin Scudary. All right, for Martin County High School, I'm very happy to announce that all MCHS Fall Sports teams made it to districts, regionals, or states this season. The Tiger football team was named district champions. The boys swim team are overall Combine 3A regional champions. For boys golf, Tyler Lilienfeld and Joshua Halpern are regional qualifiers. For girls golf, Abby Halpern is a regional qualifier. For volleyball, they are district champions and they made it to the region semifinal. Additionally, girls cross-country finished fourth at districts and qualified for regionals. Madeline Bussum and Elizabeth Rappaport led the girls while the boys team also, or well, the boys team also qualified for the regional meet, and they were led by Robbie Ziskinder and Cameron Lawan. Finally, congratulations to our district champion boys bowling team, who have now advanced to the state tournament. A special shout-out to Matt Gambas and Sienna Seo, who finished as the highest-scoring bowlers in the boys and girls divisions respectively. Now, for the beginning of winter sports. Girls soccer started their season strong with an 8-0 win over John Carroll, led by Luciana Lit with four goals. She did it again the next night, scoring all three in a 3-0 victory over South Fork. Special shout-out to Liana Diaz for earning Player of the Game honors with two assists. The MCHS Sunshine Committee recognized the Employee of the Month for October and named Marisol Ortiz, our incredible Spanish teacher and Spanish Honor Society advisor. Thank you to the AFJROTC for their community-wide participation in various Veterans Day events. Cadet present, present, blah. Presented the colors at Palm City Elementary and appeared alongside the MCHS Tiger Regiment and the Tigerettes for the Veterans Day Parade on November 11. In performing arts news, MCH Drama, MCHS Drama completed an impressive weekend run of Shuddersome Tales of Poe. Congratulations to the amazing drama students and their director, Ms. Porcelli. And congratulations to our MCHS Tiger Regiment, who earned straight superiors at NPA. We are beyond proud to recognize the 152 Martin County High School students who earned their Ace Cambridge Diploma during the June exam series. Our leadership class is partnering with Class of 2028 to host a Parents Night Out, where parents can drop off their elementary-level students on December 6. And finally, we would like to celebrate Ms. Leon, who was just announced Teacher of the Year for our district, and she is one of our wonderful Martin County High School teachers. Our Winter Lunch Festival, Winter Pep Rally, and our Winter Spirit Week will take place during the last week of school in December, December before break. We are also preparing to promote our student involvement and support for all of our winter sports. Finally, for South Fork High School, the Bulldogs hosted their first-ever outdoor marksmanship competition for air rifles on November 9. A total of seven teams and 33 marksmen competed. A huge shout-out to the Bulldogs team commander, Cadet Julissa Jones, who placed fourth out of 33 in the prone position. This month, the Bulldog Cadets supported five separate Veterans Day events across Martin County. These included parades, color guard demonstrations, and speaking to students. On November 1, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Liberty Landeros and Cadet Aiden Roy had the distinct honor of serving as Honor Flight Guardians for the Southeast Honor Flight Network. The Army JROTC Bulldog Battalion is partnering with House of Hope on this year's Service Learning Project. South Fork's annual trunk retreat event involved a supply drive for the Humane Society of the Treasure Coast, and they were able to deliver them in October. South Fork beat their own record for baskets donated to the Elevate Hope Thanksgiving Basket Drive. We don't know the winning school in the competition until Thursday, but South Fork is hopeful to take home the Turkey Trophy for the third year in a row. South Fork is also currently organizing our winters, their Winter Spirit Week class competition, holiday gift drive, and student sections for the upcoming basketball season. That is all for this month. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Delaney. Next up is our district update with Derek Low.
Not yet. Okay, there we go. Madam Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Maine, my name is Derek Low. It's an honor to bring you this month's district update. Kicking things off. This year, or this month rather, marks one year since the launch of our All-in-Martin podcast. When we, what started as a way to connect with our community has now reached its 12th episode, and we're proud to celebrate certainly how far it's come since then. In this latest episode, our host Kirsty Germain sits down with our incredible digital learning team to explore how AI is being used responsibly and effectively across our schools. From lesson planning to student research, AI is becoming a valuable tool in helping both teachers and students work smarter, not just faster. We're proud to be a district that embraces innovation, giving students access to the AI tools with thoughtful guardrails that encourage learning and creativity while also preventing misuse. You can listen to the All-in-Martin podcasts on our district website, martinschools.org, Spotify, YouTube, or Apple Podcasts, and we encourage everyone to check it out if you haven't already. Our district's inaugural series of STEM Center field experiences is off to an incredible start. Several field trips for the school year have already taken place just next door at the SPAM Robotics Center, right here in our district office. This program gives students a chance to step outside the classroom and immerse themselves in robotics, engineering, and STEM career pathways, really bringing those concepts to life. Modeled after the success of our Environmental Studies Center field trips, the STEM Center experience connects what students learn in class to real-world applications through interactive challenges, demonstrations, and team-based problem solving. By sparking curiosity and creativity in this way, we're helping students develop the skills and the confidence that they'll need for future success in the modern workforce. Let's take a look back at one of our recent field trips. We're also incredibly proud to share that four of our schools have been recognized amongst Florida's top 500 elementary and middle schools by U.S. News &amp; World Report. Jensen Beach Elementary made an impressive climb to number 182, up nearly 50 spots from just last year. Bessie Creek Elementary also rose significantly to number 189, and Palm City Elementary made its debut on the list at number 476. At the middle school level, Hidden Oaks earned the number 226 statewide. These rankings also reflect strong academic performance, with many of our schools showing 70% to 80% of students performing at or above proficiency in both math and reading. Our schools continue to prove that an A-rated school district doesn't rest, it keeps moving forward, and this recognition is a direct result of the hard work, collaboration, and commitment to excellence shown every day by not only our students, but also our staff. That concludes this month's district update. Until next month, you can find us on our district app, also social media profiles for Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, YouTube, Spotify, Apple Podcasts, wherever you scroll. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Next up is the Superintendent Maine's update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I begin, I just want to thank the Fowey Sailfish Singers Chorus again. They did a wonderful job. I know the audience has left, but for those of you that are watching, streaming, our future middle school and high school chorus and performing arts students, so thank you to Fowey and for providing them the opportunity to be here this evening. I also want to explain our chief, Chief of Staff's absence, Ms. Jennifer DeShazo tonight. We want to congratulate her son, recent graduate of South Fork High School last year. Sworn, was sworn in this morning by the United States Marine Corps and is on his way to boot camp if he's not already arrived early this morning. So congratulations to Cameron DeShazo and to Chief DeShazo for that. A little personal shout-out because we can do that. All right. So with that, I would also like to keep the congratulations going. This past month, the district named our 25, 26 Principal of the Year and Assistant Principal of the Year. I'd like to congratulate both Principal Lauren Raebner from Palm City Elementary and Assistant Principal Jamie Laws from Jensen Beach Elementary. Both of these outstanding educators were chosen because of their outstanding, longstanding dedication to student success, staff support, and community engagement. Their names will now be submitted to the Florida Department of Education to represent us at the state level this spring. We are incredibly proud to have them on our team, and we know they will represent Martin County well. Let's now watch a brief video of the moment that we were able to surprise them with this announcement.
We have some very, very exciting announcements, so this is definitely going to be the highlight of my day. And we are going to begin by announcing our Martin County School District Assistant Principal of the Year. It is my absolute honor and privilege to announce Ms. Jamie Law. You have done an incredible job leading your school and supporting the students of Jensen Beach Elementary School with passion and just love and patience. You are a big reason that that school is so accepting of your ESE population. It is my honor and absolute pleasure to announce Ms. Lauren Raebner as Principal of the Year. She does everything with excellence, attention to detail, very passionate about the students and her building, the community, and the family. And it is an absolute honor having you represent us. You will represent us very well.
Congratulations to them. We will have both of them in attendance at our next board meeting so that we can congratulate them here and take some pictures. I believe that we've got a real shot this year, both at the elementary assistant principal level and the elementary principal level. We got real close last year. This year, I think we will, we'll take it over the top. So congratulations to both of those phenomenal leaders. This past weekend, the district also had the opportunity to celebrate and name our Teachers of the Year alongside the Education Foundation of Martin County. During the annual awards ceremony, Martin County High School's Shonda Leon was named the District Teacher of the Year and will represent Martin County now at the state-level competition. The event also honored winners Cassie Mailhot from Stewart Middle School, the district's middle school teacher of the year, and Alexis Gray, Palm City Elementary, the district's elementary teacher of the year. Felix A. Williams, for the second year in a row, claimed the coveted Spirit Award. I'd like to once again thank the Education, the Education Foundation of Martin County for hosting the annual event. The evening highlighted the community's deep appreciation for our educators who uplift and inspire students every day. So, thank you to all of those that were able to attend. And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to mention how grateful I am, as well as the board, to have been able to participate in this year's Veterans Parade. And we are greatly appreciative to all of our veterans and the sacrifices that they have made for our nation. Although students were off from school this year on Veterans Day, many still participated in the Stewart Veterans Day Parade, proudly representing the district through their JROTC programs or their band programs or various clubs. Several elementary schools were also able to participate. And I know that I speak on, not only on behalf of myself, but the board, that as we were walking down that Ocean Avenue that morning, it was extremely, made all of us proud to be able to see the number of students and their families that came out to line the streets and watch the parade and give thanks to our veterans. So, let's take a look at this year's Veteran Day celebration.
Today, we join together to show our respect and gratitude to the brave men and women who have served in the United States Armed Forces.
So, Veteran Day approachen because we show, we show war. Nation, we show war. Army, we show. But United States.
If they weren't brave, then we wouldn't be standing here right now.
I believe that it's important to honor all the men and women who have served our country so that they can, to protect the freedoms that we've had as a, as a nation and who are willing to serve. It's a great commitment, and we can certainly do a small event like this to tell everyone thank you.
I'm a very emotional person, and it's very moving. It makes me feel so great and so happy that my children, my grandchildren can be involved.
Veterans are true examples of leadership and love for our country.
Happy Veterans Day!
Madam Chair, at this time, this concludes my superintendent's update.
Perfect. Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on the other information-only reports? Okay, seeing none. We will move on. It is 4:51. It is time for public comment, or close to time for public comment. I only have one. I will make sure that we call again at 5:00 p.m., but I have, we'll go ahead and get started. I have Yoel Reyes. First up, let me just read this really quick, too. Citizen input is vital to the improvement of our district. Most times, your remarks may be listened to without comment from board members or the superintendent. This does not mean they are heard with any less intensity or concern. Where appropriate, the superintendent and staff will investigate your comments and report back to you and the board with an answer. We thank you for taking the time and having the concern to make our district better. Your presentation to the board should not exceed three minutes. Letters or statements from others not present can be given to our clerk, who will be sure that each school board member and the superintendent receive a copy. To keep our record straight and authentic, our policy does not permit, permit you to read the statements of others into the record. Okay.
Good afternoon. That was a great performance we witnessed just a few moments ago from that chorus, but it wouldn't be possible without the teachers who make it happen every day. And just for all the work they put in, day in, day out. And now around this time, two years ago, 2023, the Retention Committee released its findings that 42% of Martin County teachers left over a span of four years. And about 27% of those were first-year teachers, and 48% had been teaching in this district for under three years. That's in comparison to Palm Beach County, which experienced a turnover rate of about 7%. Port St. Lucie Schools, about 4%, and Indian River, about 5%. And it's really pretty alarming. I know, Mr. Maine, it happened, or you became the superintendent right about the time that was released, and I wonder now if the retention has gotten any better in Martin County. But it really wouldn't surprise me if it hasn't. We've seen so many things happen. Just a few weeks ago, the incident in Indian Town Middle School with three students hospitalized after consuming THC gummies. And teachers just put up with so much every single day that it's very difficult for them to continue to work. A lot of them cited in the report, they didn't feel they had enough support from the district, from the board, and that they weren't compensated fairly. So, my question tonight is if the, that same committee has been working on compiling findings about why teachers are leaving still. Two years ago, I had nine teachers, and six of them are gone from Martin County High School. So, I wonder if the committee is continuing to keep track of that and if it will be released in the next two years, so it'll have a span of four years total. Also, what more is being done for our teachers? So, that's all I have to say, and we're coming up on Thanksgiving. Time to be grateful for the teachers and the administrators who put in so much work to keep our schools safe and educate our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving on. I know I did skip over Board Member Information Share because there was nothing there. If anybody has anything that they would like to share at this point, we can, or we can wait till Board Member comments. Okay. Moving on to item number 1401, which was the resolution read by Ms. Pritchett. So, I would entertain a motion to approve that resolution. I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item 20.01, School Board Travel. I will entertain public comment if there's anyone here that would like to speak on this item as required by Florida statute. We need to announce that. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.02, which is ratification of the Ask, of Asmi's tentative agreement and MOU for fiscal year 2526. Are there any questions, or do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.03, which is the non-bargaining salary increase for fiscal year 2526. Any, if there's any questions, or do I have a motion?
I move. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.04 is our, the school-wide improvement plans. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.05, School Advisory Council memberships. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.06 has been removed. Item 20.07, Window Hardening Project. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.08, our requisitions to be approved over $100,000. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.09, which is revision of graduation slash testing dates for 2526. This was just for the public. This was done in order to accommodate the testing schedule so students weren't, didn't have to return to school after graduation for a high-stakes test.
Move to approve 20.09?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Moriarty, Dr. Moriarty, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, item, all the items in 21 are a first review by the school board and, and will entertain a motion to approve the advertising. First off, are there any questions on any of these policies? So, at the pleasure of the board, we can take them all at once, or we can do them one by one?
I move approval of the advertising for all of them.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 22, which is public review of school board policies. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on any of these policies that are being presented to the board? Okay, seeing none. Are there any questions from the board on any of these policies? And again, at the pleasure of the board, we can take them all at once, or we can go one by one.
I'll move approval of all of them, but could you read the policy names into the record, please?
Okay, so Ms. Roberts has moved approval of the following policies. 0124, Standards of Ethical Conduct. 2522, Challenges to Adoption of Use of Instructional, Library, or Reading List Materials. Policy 2800, Educational Services for Students in Department of Juvenile Justice Education Programs. This is a new policy. 5460, which is graduation requirements. 5463, Credits from Other Schools. 5465, General Education Development or GED Tests. 6105, Authorization to Use Facsimile Signatures. 6610.01, Contracts for Operation of Vending Machines on School Property. This is being rescinded. 7101, Building Permits and the Code Enforcement Office. 7400, Safety and Health is being rescinded. 7410 is Maintenance. 8419, Emergency Closing, Closing of Schools is being rescinded. 8420, Emergency Management, Emergency Preparedness, and Emergency Response Agencies. 8480, Disruption of School is being rescinded. And Policy 9271 is Personalized Education Program for Students, and this is a new policy.
I second Ms. Roberts' motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we now have open to the board. Oh, yes. Yes, it's 5:01. If there's anybody else from the public who has not already spoken that would like to speak at our time-certain spot of 5:00 p.m. for public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll, we'll move right into open to the board. Who would like to go first? Ms. Pritchett?
First off, I want to thank everyone for the support they gave me during my year of being chair. It was a lot of fun. I stumbled a lot, but I feel like I landed on my feet, and I really appreciate everybody's support. And I want to wish congratulations to you, Ms. Powers, and to you, Dr. Moriarty, and I hope that Derek will get a picture of the new Chair and Vice Chair and the rest of us. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Moriarty?
Yes, I want to congratulate our outgoing Chair, Ms. Pritchett, for a job well done. And I want to congratulate our new Chair, Ms. Powers. Good luck this year. You're gonna need it. No, no, I'm just kidding. The Fowey Singers were fantastic today. Congratulations to them. We were able to, several of us from the board and the superintendent and staff were able to attend a luncheon with Leadership Martin, where the culinary team at Martin County High School prepared a lunch for us. And I just wanted to give kudos to them because the meal was absolutely fantastic, and they are doing a great job over there raising future chefs and leaders. So, it was just outstanding. Me and, I think everyone here was at the Education Foundation's Teacher of the Year Celebration. I just want to give kudos to Lisa Rose and that organization. It was a fun night, great celebration, great to see all the teachers together and celebrating. And congrats to all of the nominees and the winners. And finally, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving break, and hopefully you have a safe and wonderful time with family and friends.
Roberts?
Sure. I want to thank Martin County High School for their presentations that they did for the Edgar Allan Poe thing. It was very spooky. And Jensen Beach High School for their presentation of Clue. I also enjoyed the performances at Stewart Middle School and Indian Town Middle School. I'm a little bit disappointed that we didn't have the talent show at Martin County High School like was scheduled, but that will come back, I'm sure. And congratulations to all of our students that won something at Martin County Council for the Arts Marty's Awards. I would also like to take a moment to thank C.C. Schofield for her vision for the Photography Awards Ceremony that she put together, and Mark Cowles for him, his implementation of that vision. I think it was very well done, and I think the students really received a lot out of it. And a kudos to the three musicians who came and brought some live music and, and the singers that came from South Fork that sung. Thank you.
Ms. Russell? I'm gonna say congratulations to our new Chair and Vice Chair. Thank you, Ms. Pritchett, also for what you've done for the last year. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope you have a great time with your family and get some rest.
Perfect. Thank you. So, I have a couple of things. I want to say thank you to Amy. Thank you for your leadership over the past year. It's not always an easy task, leading the board, and it does require a lot more time and commitment. And I really appreciate everything that you've done over the past year for the board, so thank you very much. Like everybody, the Veterans Day Parade was just amazing. And as the superintendent said, it was, brought a lot of joy seeing families on the sidewalk watching and clapping and cheering and being a part of the parade and honoring our veterans. And I was very honored to be able to participate alongside my fellow board members. And again, congratulations to all the Teachers of the Year and all the teachers that were there. It was such a fun night. I, I guess one of my, I got pulled out onto the dance floor by Palm City Elementary performers, which was really fun. Yeah, lifelong dream fulfilled. It was great. It was really fun. I also want to say a very special congratulations to our own Chief DeShazo and her son Cameron. And for those of you that don't know Cameron, he is a true testament of perseverance and really staying the course for what he wanted to achieve. And he did, and he had some disappointments along the way, but in the end, he kept his eye on the prize, and he is now serving our country very honorably, and we are so proud of him at the Martin County School District and all of our students that serve in our armed forces. And then finally, I just want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. I hope everyone enjoys a little time away from the office and with your families and are able to relax and enjoy and be thankful for all that we have and all that we have to come. So, thank you all very much. Superintendent Maine?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to address, if I could, for a couple of minutes. I, first off, want to thank you very much for coming up to the podium and speaking both last month and this month. You are very well-spoken. You are articulate. And it's, it's a good model for students in the district to be able to come up and respectfully speak about what it is that's on your heart and what it is that's on your mind. So, I do appreciate that. We value that and look forward to that for our students because that's what we teach you to do. But with that, I do want to address some of the data that, that you- But with that, I do want to address some of the data that you presented tonight. And I encourage you, before the evening is over, or at a time that's convenient for you, to set up a time to meet with our Executive Director, Jeff Raymond of HR, to talk about some of your ideas, some of your concerns, some things that maybe we can go a little deeper on when we talk about teacher or staff retention. And then also want you to know that every month, we present an HR monthly update in the board agenda. Tonight, it is on Slide 4 for all of those that are watching in the HR update. We do report data all the way back from '22 to '23, and we do show our retention rate for all of those years. I will also let you know that as we track that data over time, over the last three years, our retention rate here in the Martin County School District is 86%. And so, and that has gone up a percent or two each year over the last couple of years. So, I do encourage you to look at that data. That data is shared. It is an expectation of mine that our HR department is monitoring those data elements so that all of us can make good decisions based on that data that we are experiencing or that we receive. The exit interviews from teachers are very important, and not just from our teachers, but from our staff. And you are absolutely right. Some of those exit interviews do glean a lack of support or feeling a lack of support. And so, we are going to continue to move forward in the teachers that we do see leave the district to continue reaching out across the aisle and really finding out what it is that they felt like they were lacking from the school that they taught at or worked at. I will also say that recently just published, the Palm Beach County School District, on average, has over 900 teachers per year that leave the Palm Beach County School District. So, this is a state-of-Florida problem. In fact, it's a national problem. And we have to work together to continue making sure we're creating environments in which our teachers and our staff want to stay. So, I would encourage you to continue that dialogue, both with me and with Executive Director Raymond, and find ways that we can help bridge that gap and keep our great teachers here in Martin County. So, thank you. I appreciate your time this evening. I also want to just thank outgoing Chair Pritchett for your year of leadership. I appreciate it. It is difficult, as Board Chair Powers suggested, a lot of different things that we have to navigate, but it's been an excellent year, and I appreciate your support in our work together. And also, congratulations, Mrs. Powers, and I look forward to what I think will be an exciting year of more progress and growth for the Martin County School District, and for everybody who's watching, and to all of our teachers, faculty, and staff, have a wonderful Thanksgiving. We have a lot to be thankful for and blessed. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more business before the board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.